Welcome to the regular schools committee meeting of May 6, 2015. Calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. First up on the agenda is our high school representative, Talia. Take it away.
Neshova has had a great spring so far. Mr. Burke's freshman English class ran Romeo and Juliet last month in the auditorium. Neshova art shows last week. Art from all the classes, including photography, ceramics, printmaking, drawing and painting, were displayed. There's also tribute to Michelle Barnes. Artwork is part of their day and all of her work with the school. Neshova's current students went on the French exchange trip a few weeks ago. The students visited Paris and many of the famous landmarks there. They also attended school with their exchange students who came to Neshova earlier this year. On May 1st, the seniors celebrated this day by wearing their college apparel. Students are also looking forward to the bubble soccer tournament on Friday. Nine Neshova Deacon members attended Nationals in Orlando last week and did a great job. The juniors are getting excited for prom next Saturday, which will be at Mechanics Hall, and after prom will be at Orchard Hills. Relation Life is being held in Neshova at the end of the month. AP tests are happening this week and next week. The National Honor Society has been baking cookies for the students to have during testing breaks. Seniors are looking forward to senior week. Senior picnic and awards night is on June 1st. The senior trip to the Red Sox is on June 2nd, and senior banquet is on June 4th. The Jazz Dens have their last performance on Friday, which will be featuring senior solos. The Good Young Movement is fundraising to get clean water to people in need and for relief for life.
Any questions for Talia? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good job.
Moving on to new business. First up is Talia Rich with the athletic director's report.
All right, so I'm gonna go over recap of winter and then give you a quick update on how spring has started. So over the winter, we had a successful season. Overall, seven out of our nine teams qualified for playoffs. We had 28 total league All-Stars. We had a little over 250 athletes, and 70 percent of those athletes were on the quarter three honor roll. Our Alpine and Nordic ski teams did well for, they were young this year, not as many seniors on the teams, but a lot of freshmen that show a lot of promise in the next few years. Jessie Duncan finished 18th overall in our league, and Gareth Carey finished 22nd overall in our Nordic skiing. Both of our indoor track teams went 2-4 in the regular season, and both placed third in the league meet. The girls had four league All-Stars and the boys had two. The girls team sent two teams to the state meet, and the boys team, Adam Heislein, placed 7th in the mile in the state, and Kyle Cludier placed 6th in the 2-mile in the state. This year with our swimming and diving team, we became a co-op team with Marlboro and Hudson to up our numbers on the team, and overall, the team went 2-9 this season, but did show improvement from last season with their record. And then comparing scores from meets from last year to this year, last year they were scoring approximately 70 points per meet, and this year they bumped to an average of 80 points per meet, so we are showing improvement with our swim team.
Who do you call the team?
Neshova.
So it's Neshova, but there are other...
Yeah, we're the whole school.
So they're the towns that are in Neshova also?
Yep.
Oh, good. Good for Neshova.
Yep. One minute, I get to go.
It's orange and red.
Yeah. We've got some crazy colors, you know, with our co-op teams, but because they swim for us, we're the host school, so we cost those in Neshova, and we wear green.
Do we get the fees?
Yes.
Just one question.
Yep, no, they swim for us, they pay our fees.
Okay.
Yep. We had two students from the swim team qualify for the sectional and state meet, and we had two league All-Stars. This year was our first year for our gymnastics co-op team, so gymnastics, we co-op with Marlboro as the host school, so we wore orange and black. It was Neshova, Marlboro, and Tohonto. We actually had 10 girls on the team, which we had the most out of the three schools, which was nice to see, and you know, it's very exciting for our kids to have that chance to participate in gymnastics. They placed second place in the league, and they also earned the sportsmanship award at the league meet. The team qualified for the sectional tournament for the first time in five years. And Sarah Klopak and Haley Doyle both qualified and competed in the state individual meet, and Haley also went on and competed the New England championship as well in gymnastics.
So where do they practice?
Jeans gymnastics in Marlboro.
Okay, so not the schools, okay.
No. Some schools do have a gymnastics room, but Marlboro does not, so they practice at a gymnasium in a...
So do they ever end up hosting a gymnastics meet in Marlboro?
No, they, their meets are out of Jeans Gym as well.
Oh, okay.
It's a little tight there, but they set up chairs. I went to a few meets this year.
Yeah, I was wondering how people would go to attend that.
Yeah, they, they set up chairs all around the different events, and you kind of just move as you go from event to event.
Okay.
It was pretty cool. It was, I enjoyed it. The girls basketball team finished with an overall record of 21-1 this season. They were league champions for the fourth year in a row. They went back-to-back undefeated regular seasons, and they were district semifinalists. Erin Kresman became the second female in school history to score 1,000 points and was voted the league MVP. We had four league All-Stars and two Telegram and Gazette Super Team All-Stars. And I just want to note that this senior class of basketball seniors, in their four-year career, the girls who started varsity, they went 85-8 over four years.
Wow.
Yeah, unbelievable. When I went through, I'm like, add that up. So, very impressive. We'll definitely miss that group. The boys' basketball team went 15-9, which is their best record over the past five years. They qualified for the postseason for their third straight year. They were selected to play in the Clark Tournament for the second consecutive year. They won a quarterfinal game, which was the first win at the Clark since 1985. They advanced to the large school finals of the tournament, and that was the first time since 1977. Unfortunately, we lost a close game to Shepherd Hill, and we became Clark Tournament finalists, but again, it was great for the school and for the boys. Then they went on, they were the third seed in the playoffs. They won their first playoff game, which was at home, and that was their first playoff win since 1994. They advanced to the semifinals and had the honor to play at WPI, which anybody in high school basketball to get to WPI is a huge accomplishment. And on top of everything else, they had a great season. They were awarded the Central Mass Official Sportsmanship Award, so all the officials in Central Mass vote for one girls' team and one boys' team. And last year, our girls won it, and this year, our boys won it, so I, in my opinion, that is a huge accomplishment and award.
Did they get a trophy?
They get a banner.
Oh, nice. So you'll see that in the gym.
We will be putting that up in the gym this summer.
How is that different than, would it look just like those, the ones that are up there, huh? Or would it look...
No, it's, it's, they provide it to us, and it says, it's their board, Board 44, and it says, "Central Mass Official Sportsmanship Award," and it has our name on it.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
So this one up there already for the girls?
It'll be up there.
Awesome.
We had a bunch of rearranging of a...
Just winning too many things.
There is a lot of things we have to get up. There's a lot of trophies and banners that we've won lately, so we had to rearrange stuff over the summer and over Christmas vacation last year, so this summer we'll be finishing everything up in the gym. Girls' ice hockey, we're still a co-op team with Algonquin, Hudson, and Marlboro. Algonquin's the host school, so we go by Algonquin, and we wear their uniforms and colors. They qualified for playoffs this year. They lost in the first round of quarterfinals, and we had five players from Neshova playing for the girls' team this year.
The colors are good.
You know.
I'm just thinking.
Well, I mean, I like green, so... The wrestling team, they went 15-6. They had seven All-Stars. They were the De Meo Dual Champions, which is the tournament that we host. They became Division II Sectional Champions. Coach Conry was voted and selected by his peers as Division II Sectional Coach of the Year. And they became, they went on, and they won the Division II State Championship for the first time in school history this season. And then we go on, the boys' ice hockey team, they finished the year at 17-6. They had five All-Stars. They made it to the sectional championship, and they won for the first time since 1980. They went on to play the Western Mass Champ in the Division III A State Championship, and they beat Chickapi Compt 4-2 and won the first state title in school history as well. That was a great Thursday night out in Springfield. We got to come back. The next morning, the coach, myself, and the captains were invited to go to Boston to a breakfast of champions down at the Garden that the MIA put on, so a little bit of sleep, but it was a great experience, and the boys really enjoyed that. And again, to have two state titles in one season is just unbelievable. You don't see that very often. So that's pretty much our, our winter. Quick update on spring, we found out two weeks ago that our field hockey coach, Jamie Mariani, I nominated her to be a Coach of the Year, and the MIA did choose her to be the State Coach of the Year. She'll be awarded at the end of May down at the MIA. Spring sports are finally up and running. The snow did melt, we finally have some nice weather. Very busy month of May, games almost every day. Couple highlights so far, our girls tennis team is off to a great start. They have an 8-1 record right now. They were district finalists last year, and kind of, that's been their motivation, that they, they felt they could win that match last year in the district finals, so that's kind of been pushing them this year, and they're off to a great start. The boys' track team is 4-0. I believe the girls are winning. Last time I checked, they're at Hudson right now. They should be 3-1 after this afternoon. Both teams have meets this Friday, and Neshova has been chosen to host the Midwatch B League Championship Meet on May 20th. Also, our unified track team has been chosen to host the league championship next Wednesday. The boys lacrosse team, they, they improved to 6-6 last night with a huge win over Algonquin. We believe it's our first boys lacrosse win over Algonquin since the program started. And the softball team, they, they were in the 10th inning when I left school. With Hudson right now, their overall record is 5-4 right now. Baseball team just won on a two-run homerun in the bottom of the seventh, so now they're on an eight-game win streak. They're 8-1, and so far, spring sports are going pretty well.
It almost looked, sounded like you got a news ticker, and you were just reading that.
I got, our trainers have been texting me the updates as they go, because we're going in the 10th, like I said, with softball.
Are they still tied?
Let me check.
So when all these banners and awards go up, do they just kind of quietly go up, or is it a presentation?
Softball just won 6-5. So our regular banners in the gym, if we win a league championship, a district championship, we just add the year to the banner. If you win a state championship, you get a larger banner. Right now, I'm working with a company to get the banners for ice hockey and wrestling, and most likely, we do a, we would do a banner unveiling at the beginning of next season for both those teams.
Great.
So...
The top is, can it be more?
Some like, yes, some of the seniors will be obviously gone. It's tough, especially, I wasn't aware we were going to be winning state titles, so to budget that in last minute, to get two banners is always, you know...
Can the booster club help?
They did.
You should have anticipated that.
Can you, the booster club help take it?
They could.
Someone has to suggest it.
Yeah. But we're going to do something special for wrestling and hockey. At the last night lacrosse game, we're planning something right now to honor both teams at halftime, to make kind of a big event.
And the Red Sox.
That's right. The Red Sox, they chose 12 teams across the state that won state championships during the winter season, and they invited those teams to the Red Sox game last Tuesday. At first, we thought it was only coaches and captains that were going to be able to go on the field. When we got there, they changed their plans. They said, "Anybody on your varsity roster can go on the field with you." So we made as many phone calls as we could to get everyone there early, and we were able to get our hockey and wrestling teams on. It was a game was at 6:10. I think we went on probably 5:00 to 6:00. They announced each team, put all the teams on the Jumbotron. It was right before the game started, so it was a great experience. The kids, I mean, to be on the warning track at Fenway Park was pretty exciting. The kids are pumped.
That's right.
Yeah. So, been busy, exciting.
Very exciting, lots of, lots of success. Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Talia? I didn't want to forget. Thank you very much.
So we have the results of the Emerson study, which is done every two years, and Donna Lindstrom, our interim nurse leader and coordinator for health and wellness, is here, and she has a special guest as part of our SHAC committee, and I'll let her introduce her.
This is Emma Cavaness. Should we come up?
Absolutely.
Emma Cavaness has been our student representative on School Health Advisory Council for the last two years, and this is her swan song. She's graduating, so she agreed to come with me this evening so that she can help speak to some of the issues that we've been talking about. We've been presenting these results to groups across the district, and one of them was School Health Advisory Council, and Emma was there, and she also brought her replacement representative, Anthony Teta, from Stowe. And as we were going through the slides and talking about them, these two had such insight and such great information and suggestions that we decided that we were going to put together a student group at the high school and to bring together a group of students so that, to meet on a fairly regular basis. We'll start by analyzing some of these results and then zeroing in on things that look like they need a little bit of attention and hope that between the students and our health teachers and our administrators and other stakeholders that we can come up with some sort of suggestions and ideas of how to work on some of the issues that are a little bit of concern that are showing up on our, on our YRBS. So everyone's familiar with the Youth Risk Behavior Survey and how it got started. So we joined this particular aggregate in 2011. So we've participated in this group out of Emerson Hospital twice now, because it's administered every two years. So 2012 was the first, 2014, and it's administered in March of those years to sixth graders, eighth graders, and then all high school students. We send home letters ahead of time to notify parents. They are able to opt out of the survey if they choose to. It's administered as, as close to all at once as we can to minimize any deviations and sharing of answers and that sort of thing. And then all of the results are sent to a research analyst group, and they actually specialize in teen surveys, and so they have been analyzing the results, and they provide us with this information in these forms. So I think you probably have both the full set of information and then the appendix, which I've found to be most helpful in looking at. The appendix has slides and selected comparisons that that survey group actually pulled out for a variety of reasons. They felt that it was interesting comparatively to our aggregate groups or to state groups. So the state of Massachusetts also administers this study to a cross-section, a selection of high school students across the state, and they did theirs in 2013. So some of these slides actually have a comparison to the Massachusetts results as well. So I won't go through every one of them. Obviously, they're, they're fairly self-explanatory, but I wanted to zero in on just a few areas that we're a little bit concerned about, so that you can all follow through. Are you on the appendix?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so just the first slide, which is numbered 32 at the bottom, seatbelt use. This is the group of slides that were pulled out of the safety area of the, of the YRBS. So we have the seatbelt use. The next is riding with an impaired driver. That means a minor, so someone under the age of 21 who had been using alcohol or other drugs. And this is during the past month, and so these are the affirmative answers that, yes, these students stated that they have been, had driven with an impaired driver. That also is concerning to us virtually, of course, with the, the safety aspect, but also relating to the fact that they're with people who are using alcohol or drugs under age. And so we'll look at that also when we're talking about substance use and abuse later down the line.
So this is, so this doesn't distinguish between the impaired driver, whether the impaired driver was also underage?
The impaired driver is the one that's underage. That's how the question was stated to them. So they rode with a minor who was driving and impaired.
Okay.
Yes. The results at the bottom, by the way, comparisons over time, again, we only have two sets of studies, two sets of data here, so we can look at the comparison between the answers in 2012 and 14, and you'll see as we go along that, that the vast majority of them actually show a decrease in these negative risky behaviors, so that's a positive to take out of this all.
So the comparison, is this just for Neshova or is that for the whole?
That's just for Neshova, yes. And so the, the Neshova group at the top of the slides are all the red bars, the gray, the aggregate. Our aggregate includes Acton, Boxborough, Concord, Carlisle, Groton, Dunstable, Littleton, Harvard, Maynard, Westford, and us. So the next slide, carrying a weapon on school property, again, concerning, even if 4% or 3% of the students in that grade are mentioning that, something to think about. And we now have our resource officers at the high school, and so they'll be, they will be great resources for us in, in looking at specifics.
What do they call a weapon?
Gun, knife, club, or other weapon is the way the question is stated.
So is this on, that's a weapon?
Could be, exactly. Next slide is bullying. Been bullied in school, and the definition of bullying is there listed in the question over the past 12 months.
So if, if it says grade 10 right now, those kids are actually in grade 11 now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, exactly. This was 2014 March.
Right.
And then the next slide is cyberbullying. So this has been identified by several groups as area, an area of concern. Bullying obviously leads to a hostile environment. It's very, very difficult for the people involved, and really can affect a lot of other areas of their lives. And so, again, bullying is probably a place that we need to take a look at addressing in some way. The next slide, experienced dating violence. And then...
What's the yellow?
Yellow is the state, right. The Massachusetts YRBS does not ask all of the questions that our survey does, so when the analysts pulled out these comparisons, if there was a state result that had that exact question, they added the result there to, to do a comparison for us. And the next slide, number 39, experiencing somewhat or very high stress as a result of academic workload. There are actually three questions. He pulled out this one, three questions that sound very similar. As a result of academic workload is this. As a result of events in school is the second question that's asked, and the third is as a result of events at home, I think is the way it's stated. This one, as you can see, we have a lot of students who are reporting very high stress levels. And again, in talking with a lot of stakeholders here, this, experiencing high stress levels clearly affects many other things, and we are afraid that it also may cause, may lead to other things, substance use, violence, suicide.
When Anthony and I looked at this particular statistic, this was one of the ones that stood out to us as important, because although we are similar to the aggregate in many of these fields, that does not make it any less okay. So I think if 58% of 10th graders feel extreme stress, then there's a problem. I totally can relate to those statistics, and so could Anthony when we were talking about it at our meeting, and there's such, there's a difference between positive stress and high stress. So if people are reporting very high stress, then that means it's detrimental versus if you're slightly stressed because you're working hard, that's a different thing. That's more of something that would incite you to work harder. So I totally can relate to these statistics, and I think it's definitely a root cause of many of the other riskful behaviors that we're looking at. So I think it's important to look at it, and this was one of the reasons why Anthony and I talked about creating a group, so we could just talk about ways to reduce stress. And I think it's important to just have a bunch of students input of ways that we can try and make your experience at high school less stressful. So there's a lot of work to do, but there's better ways to handle the stress involved.
And how are you going to go about getting the people to be a part of your group? Is this going to be a volunteer thing, or perhaps maybe a suggestion for leaders and...
Anthony and I actually met the previous week, and we pulled together a big list of students that we were thinking of inviting, and then Mr. Glover, who is co-chairing it with Mrs. Lindstrom, kind of picked out a few students to invite just for our first meeting. We had our first meeting, and not many people were able to come, but we're looking forward to making a bigger group, so that's where we're starting.
People are, some very interested, they're just very busy, so trying to get everyone together.
Especially those kids who are super stressed out, or the ones who are already doing a hundred different things.
And, and looking at these statistics is, I think it's important, and people have lots of things to say, so when we had our meeting, we stopped on this one, and we could, Anthony and I had many things to say about how we feel stressed in high school. So I just know for sure it would be interesting to have the input of lots of other students.
And I do remember from the last one that junior year is always the highest.
In a lot of these areas, we find that the bias, grade 11 is, I think it's well-known as very difficult.
Yes.
Senior year is a close second, I'm sure, to try to finish things up and get, take it out the door, but yes, solid and great. So that, that's another thing that we're looking at, is determining where, where is it that we need to start on each of these issues? Do we, do we go back before 6th grade and start in addressing issues in some of those areas? Is it something that needs to be targeted and then revisited annually with students depending on the issue? And so that, that's another part of this that we'll need to figure out and determine, looking at that and probably talking with some experts about where the impact needs to be and where we need to start.
Do you have experts in mind?
One of the things we'll need to research is trying to find who out there knows. We're, we, of course, the, the health group works with guidance as well, and certainly we have, so we have in-house experts in some of these things as well. Our health teachers, our health curriculum teachers are wonderful, and so I think we'll start in-house and then looking about and consult as we need to others. Next slide, violence-related issues, injured self on purpose. So this is self-injury. The question, I believe, makes a point of saying that these are non-suicidal injuries, so it's, it's called NSSI, and so we do have reports of this. The nurses in the district report that they see students in their offices who have, have injured themselves purposely. So those are, those are worries, so... The next slides, two slides, suicide, seriously considering suicide in the past 12 months. Again, this is one of the areas that we're very, very concerned about. And the next slide after that 41 is reporting that they've actually attempted suicide in the previous year. So we have a program in the district that addresses signs, it's called Signs of Suicide, SOS. It is presented in the middle schools during one year of the middle school year, it's either 7th or 8th grade, and then it is repeated in a similar fashion in that high school level in the 10th grade during health, the sophomore health class. My biggest worry from this slide is we're looking at grade 6, seriously considering suicide, 5% are reporting that they have done that. So if we wait till 7th or 8th grade to address, then we're missing that group who is already very concerned about that. And if 5% are reporting that they're seriously considering, then we are talking about the other 95% who probably know someone who is considering, and if we can teach them what to look for and what to do with the information or with their worries or concerns if they do see it, then that's, that would be, I think, the key in middle school at least, and we have to obviously balance the concern about sharing that. It's a very adult topic with young children, and so we thought perhaps we could look at talking more, not necessarily approaching it with the word suicide, but talking about signs of depression, and also teaching children even earlier or younger than, than middle school, self-advocacy, resiliency, there are programs out there that we can put into health classes that would talk specifically about that. And again, maybe when they get to that age level where the stress is, they've already learned a lot of those coping skills, and that maybe we can diminish some of this as well.
I was about to say, it's all related, and I just think reducing stress can reduce reasons you'd want to end your life, so I think that's important to think about, too.
Exactly. Many of these are interrelated.
So you don't even have the thought in the first place, let alone... So, you don't even have the thought in the first place, let alone preventing it, so.
Exactly. And then, there's a whole section of tobacco use. So, have you ever tried cigarette smoking? And then, um, slide forty-three is recent cigarette use. Uh, the, the plus to take away from this is if you see the, at the bottom, uh, the slide, the differences between two thousand twelve and two thousand fourteen, we do have some decrease. So, um, I thought that was a positive. Um, smoking cigars, again, we've had a pretty significant decrease over the, the two years. Um, then we get into alcohol use. And again, um, an area I wanted to highlight because we're quite concerned about some of the numbers that are showing up here. And, um, as Emma so eloquently said in our meeting last, uh, last week, although we are similar and in line, um, with our aggregate in a lot of areas, um, in this slide, we do seem to have a higher number in grades ten, eleven, and twelve than our aggregate group. So, um, they are, um, students are reporting that they are drinking, um...
We also noticed how, um, the percentage doubles from ninth to tenth grade, um, for both recent alcohol use and ever trying alcohol, which, um, is kind of concerning. So, we talked about that, um, area between ninth and tenth grade as an intervention point to prevent any further increases of people using alcohol.
It's interesting, the stress level and the alcohol use is almost exactly the same, like the percentage of all.
Exactly. And, s- exactly. So, can we draw inferences that they are, as, that they're quite related?
Definitely, I think they're coping.
Right, exactly. Um, and, uh, binge drinking, again, um, eleventh grade seems to have quite a bump. Um, attended parties in homes where alcohol used by teens is allowed. So, this means that the, um, the family, um, or parents are aware that alcohol is being used in their home and these teens know this and are going to parties there.
Do we think that the parents are aware that they could be arrested?
Absolutely.
So, exactly right, exactly...
Smart, educated parents. They're not ignorant, I mean, they're ignorant to a point, but they're smart. I, you know, I have three kids in high school. They're smart, educated people with beautiful homes, great jobs, great kids, and for some reason, this is okay.
Well, some of them, I know that some of them think that if they allow it in their house, that they're somehow, you know, keeping their kids safe because they're...
Doing it at home.
Doing it at home, but of course...
Even for their child, it's...
Oh, I, I know, I know. But I, um, I disagree with that because I've seen the results of that mistaken impression.
That's true. And, uh, they, they also may not know that for their own child, it's not allowable either because you can't allow your child to break the law. It's against the law.
And I, and I agree, but the, the, from the comment, it's like, okay, that's your child. But once you open up your house to everybody, now you're taking on that responsibility for everybody else's child.
Exactly, so. And, uh, that, so it begs the question, how do we change that perception? How do we change the culture of the community?
I think in that one, you're talking to parents.
Exactly right. And, and so, on that, on that line, we're bringing in next week, uh, and two weeks from now, so the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, we have, uh, a community forum. The, the Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth are coming, uh, they're out of the Middle Sex DA's office. So, we've brought in two presentations. One next week is on the social hosting, uh, social host liability.
Okay.
Um, so it's at the high school at seven o'clock on the twelfth.
Is that filmed?
Uh, it can't be filmed.
Cannot be filmed?
Unfortunately.
Because I'm wondering, how do you get them to go?
Right, right. So...
At least if it's on social media, somehow we can...
Exactly. And I, and unfortunately, it's their policy not to allow, uh, the form, the form presentations to be filmed. Uh, and then, on the twenty-sixth, there is a presentation on underage substance use and that is run by a sergeant in the Massachusetts State Police. He's a gang and drug, um, specialist. And, um, he's presented before in the district, I, I understand it. He's wonderful, apparently, and, um, people get a lot of his presentations. We're also looking at other ways to try to get information out to parents. Um, I've ordered some brochures. I don't know whether that's helpful, but if we can try from a variety of, of directions and perhaps have, uh, things noted in newsletters or sent home by our principals when they do their, their calls or their emails home to parents.
Yeah.
Um, just listing what the consequences can be legally, if nothing else. So, um...
Yeah, direct to parents?
Direct to parents.
Right. Like, this is what your responsibility is.
Right, right. So...
So, both of those talks are at, I'm sure?
They're both at the high school, seven o'clock. The twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
Hopefully, serving cookies?
Um, how did we not see one of them?
Is there something at Clinton High School that's in this round?
Um, there has been. I actually attended one.
Oh, made a...
Yes, I did. I attended one when my, one of, when my daughter was just getting ready to graduate from Nishoba and it was very powerful. I came away, I had some knowledge of what I thought was knowledge of the social host law and I came away, we actually decided scary that her party, even though it was a family party, was alcohol-free after I went to the, to this, um, this presentation because we were so concerned. It's just so easily tied, too divert. Um, all right, moving on to illegal drug use. So, um, had ever used marijuana, this is slide forty-nine, and recent marijuana use. So, again, our students are smoking marijuana.
The aggregate? That's huge.
Yes.
And then, there's a triple from grade nine to grade ten for this particular one as well, so, it's an interesting...
Big step up.
Things, it's a pattern.
So, again, I think another area where education is going to be very important, um, I think the perception that a lot of students have the perception that marijuana is not harmful. It's, it doesn't have the side effects that smoking cigarettes has and it's not going to hurt us and I, I think we need to try to change that perception somehow. Um, it, it, it absolutely does affect brain development and growth.
How much of this, um, was affected by the launch of...
Um, that's an excellent question. I, I did not look up when, does anyone remember when it became decriminalized?
So, I think it, I think it was three years ago, I suppose, two thousand twelve.
Yeah, it was in ten, okay.
Because, because, I mean, the flip side is another kid sells cigarettes under eighteen. Is there a, is that followed by the same as media? I'm not.
Well, it's not, well, it's not allowed. You can't purchase it. If you're, if you're caught with it, it's, it's not a criminal offense for any longer. It's still not legal to purchase, still not legal to purchase or use.
Still can sell, okay.
Right.
Unless you have a medical card.
No. Right, exactly. They have, you have to have a waiver to use it for medical purposes.
So, that's a possibility.
So, so again, marijuana use, um, is clearly happening in our group. Uh, and then...
What I understand is you can smell that. Why is that so high? Are we, are they doing it somewhere where we keep, where we're not smelling it?
I also think it's a parental issue.
So, they're not doing it at school, they're doing it other places?
I also think some parents allow it.
Well, yeah, I, I heard that. So, is there any way to find out if this is being used at the school or outside?
I think the majority of the usage is occurring outside of school.
Okay.
Some students may come to school high, but I do not think the majority of the usage is occurring at the school.
Okay. So, would this roll in with your alcohol talk? Do they talk about the same stuff?
Uh...
Or is it a totally sit down, separate subject?
The, uh, the, the presentations that are coming, when they talk, uh, not social hosting, I don't think that they, I think that's typically alcohol-related, but when, when the sergeant comes on the twenty-sixth, he talks about ball substances, including prescription drug diversion and so forth.
So, do you think that social hosting doesn't recognize this at this point?
Uh, probably not. It may, well, because again, it's, it's, it's an, it's an illegal substance and so, it may be at this point that, that it isn't looked at or specifically named in our, in our, um, laws because it's, it's illegal anyway, no matter where you...
I, I'm just wondering, because of the one ounce law, whether it could, it could somehow change that.
So, it, of course, these are all open to interpretation, so it's, it's not, there's not always an exact answer, um, to, to what we're looking at. We have to take the inferences and, and determine what we think is important for our district. Um, so, using inhalants, uh, to get high, the, I'm told that this is fairly, uh, common that the younger students start with inhalants because they're substances that are commonly in the home, so aerosols, um, glues, that sort of thing. But that, it, um, although it, they, they get, it gives a high, um, it also causes you to feel pretty ill afterward. It usually causes severe headaches and other things. And so, it, it's not a behavior that tends to continue. Once it's been tried, it's usually dropped as a, as a method for, um, getting high.
So, do you think that the kids are actually putting two, two together, inhaling and then getting a headache?
But we, you hope so. I, I mean, you, you hope so, but it may be. And, um, and this, these, I've, I've looked at this across, uh, I've been to presentations and they say, it's just traditionally, it's that age group, they start with that because, again, they're very readily and easily accessible in their homes and then drop off in, uh, other substances are what they, what they head for afterward. So, we go on, there's, um, cocaine on the next slide. Um, slide number fifty-three, I wanted to highlight a little bit as well. This is using prescription medication that's not prescribed for you. So, this is where the diversion of taking pain medication that is, um, in, in, in the home somewhere, in the family medicine cabinet or, um, it be, not, not specifically prescribed for you. However, there's also an issue, uh, that I don't think we actually ask the question, but, um, do you take prescription pain medication that's prescribed for you correctly?
Right.
Um, because there is, as everyone knows and is in the news, um, a great concern about heroin use and the explosion of that in our area and actually across the country. Uh, and virtually every study shows, um, that the, that the vast majority of heroin addicts begin by taking opioids, prescription pain medications, um, and sometimes prescribed for them for, uh, post-surgery, um, recovery or injury recovery. And so, um, this is something that I think, again, we need to impress upon students, um, that this can really lead to very, very serious consequences and to addiction. The next slide fifty-four, offered, sold, or given illegal drugs on school property in the past year. So, um, this I wanted to specifically highlight as a positive. Um, if you look down at our comparison over time, the high school dropped from twenty-three percent to thirteen percent over those two years. This, uh, I, I presented to the school council at the high school and Dr. Graham was talking about how they were very concerned about the numbers that showed, uh, on this particular slide in two thousand twelve. And, um, they, they really targeted, uh, some ways to try to, to get at this. So, our, again, our school resource officers doing, um, sweeps of the school, um, looking in lockers and, um, doing some educational pieces. And so, I see this as a great area of hope that i- if you do, if we really do look at areas and really target it from a variety of directions, we, we absolutely see results. A ten percent drop is a big drop over two years. So, I think that's...
One thing just, uh, noted on this sort of area, I remember asking last time that there is in the section for smokeless tobacco, chewing tobacco, and I know that's a big issue with kids.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think that should be part of the survey. I'll just suggest it again.
Uh, when, uh, the, the group, uh, the aggregate group meets, uh, on each of us, uh, we all get together, so that comes the end of May and we look at questions that we want to add. So, that is absolutely one that we will put in there. And heroin is another. They wanted a specific question about heroin use and whether our students are actually using heroin and at what, in what numbers.
Because I think to your point, and also those e-cigarettes, is the, the way they're vaporizing different types of drugs, that would be really important to get on here.
I agree.
Because it's not really just tobacco.
Other stuff?
No?
They do, they can, they can put things on, inhale that way. And those are completely legal. They're, they're, right, they're completely legal, so.
Why is it considered heroin?
Um, just because of the, because of the number of heroin overdoses and deaths in the, the country. The New England has a very high, uh, number. And so, we, we thought we would wanna look at whether we're actually starting and we have concern here in the district that, that our students are starting using heroin even before they leave school and, and move on. So, um, that, it may be added. It depends that, apparently, the aggregate has to choose, has to decide and, uh, whether that kind of question will be added. I mean, I'll just quickly go through the rest. I, I think that those slides are really what I wanted to show you and talk about. But there's, um, gambling, although, um, when, when Anthony and Emma were talking about gambling here, it also includes sporting events. And so, they said, you know, so many times you'll say, well, I'm gonna do that squares thing for the Super Bowl and what have you, that these numbers may be a little higher than actual gambling. It does. They call it a sporting event, right? I'll do, I'll bet you that the Red Sox are going to score in the two runs tonight, so. Um, and then sexual behavior, so, um, ever, again, the, the slide fifty-seven, ever having sexual intercourse, um, four or more sexual partners over your lifetime, recent sexual intercourse. So, again, um, this, these, this group of slides, um, I need to talk with the health teachers and see where it is that we're actually talking about this and are we? When do we begin talking about this? Um, and then, what exactly do we want to convey to students? So, it, it gets into the abstinence versus safe sex and, um, so that needs to be looked at as well.
This losing weight one's interesting.
Yes, the, the, um, the healthy behaviors and healthy habits at the end, the dietary behavior, um, people using diet pills and, and, uh, you know, a full forty percent or so are talking about, um, the fact that they feel like they're overweight.
Now, is this because of the BMI thing that we're doing or is this because of magazines? I mean, is there any thought?
No, we don't.
What did you all...
I think it's, it's around a culture in today's society and it has so many different things. I think, um, losing weight can, it's not necessarily a terrible thing, but the thought that every, like, so, the sort of percentage itself is so high is concerning, I would say. Um, I think it's a culture. It's, there's no one particular pinpoint. It's definitely part of the stress many people feel, too.
Exactly, body image.
Yes.
And, um, and so, the, perhaps the education needs to be, how do you safely, uh, lose weight if you feel that you need to? How do you do it safely and, um...
And healthily. And when you don't need to lose weight, how can you just accept yourself for that? So...
Dawn, I have a question for you. We skipped over slide number sixty. Is there, um, is there, and I, I know that in the middle school at least, this, this comes up in the health program. It brings around my son sharing it with me, or my daughter, one of them. But, um, is there a concerted effort to address that particular topic?
I'm not sure there is. When we talked in health curriculum, curriculum, do you remember the oral sex, had, ever having given or received oral sex? I know we discussed it because it was ju- widely felt by our middle school health teachers that students don't see that as sex.
Yeah.
That they don't consider that as sex and so they feel that it's something that's perhaps acceptable and it's okay, uh, to do. So, again, finding the age where it's appropriate to discuss and what is it that you, that we, that we talk to them about? What is it exactly that do we say? All right.
Do your student reps have any thoughts or suggestions on that?
Even shocked. Um, I, I think the conversation about sexual behavior just should, um, be given on a regular basis and it should be given in a real way. Um, I don't think it should involve any slides or any pamphlets or any handouts or worksheets or anything. It should just be a conversation that you can have with a teacher and as long as you can talk about it, and I think the more times that it's brought up in a more wholesome way, I think it will, um, reduce unnecessary in crazy statistics like this.
So, we're still treating it very much...
What's that?
We're still treating it like a taboo. It's like an unspoken...
Yeah, I think the culture is definitely the treat. Like, sex ed is, it seems like, ooh, that's, it's just such a, it's still taboo and it's not, there isn't like an inter... it's not, there isn't like an interration of just having wholesome values rather than this is something that you shouldn't do, it's bad, and just leaving it at that, so.
Great job.
Thank you.
So we talked a little bit about eating breakfast. We were very pleased with the vigorous physical activity three or more days the previous week, although there's quite a drop actually from two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen in our grade eight and the high school levels. But in general, somewhere in the range of seventy, you know, three quarters of our students are getting good amounts of physical activity. Sleeping an average of seven or fewer hours a night, again, they're not sleeping, they're up and about. And again, we talked about how this relates to the stress and the academic workload and all of the other activities that students are involved in, and they just don't have time to sleep, plus...
I think this is the first year I've averaged perhaps seven, near seven, I'm not sure. So as I, going through this system, that statistic is very true, and I don't like it.
Right. And although if you again, look across our aggregate, which I just think is fascinating, when you look at how many of our numbers are identical to the aggregate, means it just is happening, and this is just what happens at this age. And I just think it's fascinating that we see this.
It shouldn't have to happen now.
But exactly, so, because it's not healthy. It isn't healthy, and it makes it very hard to focus and get through your day.
I think it's directly related to stress. I don't think people aren't sleeping because of video games or any sort of electronics, which I know has been considered in the past, but this is definitely stress-related. Most people like to go to sleep before ten o'clock, or at least in that same day that they woke up, so I don't think there's anything besides stress and work that would relate to that statistic.
What would you think about the thought of flipping the high school going to school later and the elementary going to school early? Yes, yes?
Always, I've always thought that would be excellent. I know there's a lot of conflicts with athletics and there's a lot of issues with that whole idea, but I know next year there's going to be half-days on Wednesdays.
Twelve late starts.
Late starts, right, that's what it was, which is awesome. I'm jealous. Overall, I think, I remember waking up early when I was in sixth grade, and then in high school, all I want to do is sleep in later, and I need to sleep longer, so.
But you have tons more work.
Yes.
And you have to get up and be there by seven, seven fifteen on, you need to go.
Yes, so yeah, that's my case very much.
Thank you. So any questions? I'm not going to go on through these selected comparisons. They're interesting if you have time to take a look at them. They essentially took several different questions and blended them to show the effect of one on the other. So they're very, they're quite interesting to take a look at at some point. And they also give us a clue as to areas that we could concentrate on that would clearly make a difference, because it shows the comparison really does make a difference. So we'll use those as well as we're analyzing.
I was just wondering where you're going off next year and what you're interested in being.
I'm going to be playing field hockey at Brown University, and I'm looking into scientific research as my focus.
I'd be lucky, good luck.
Thank you.
And that's why she doesn't sleep. Congratulations.
It's definitely a main factor as to why I haven't slept.
Plus she's evolved in so many other things. She really, she's wonderful. So thank you.
All around great. Thank you for having me.
I do appreciate it.
Very well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very interesting. Lots of good information. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
So what do we do with the information that we now see that, you know, seventy-six percent of our kids feel that their stress is coming from academic workloads, is what that little thing at the end that I just go down to. So obviously that's being, some of it's, you know, the kid's a super high achiever, Emma, and, you know, and six, and paid off for her. But some kids, no matter what you're going to do, they're going to, but a lot of it is if you don't have that workload, you're not going to be stressed, you might not need the coping mechanisms, or outlets, or whatever you're doing. So what do we do since the majority of the stress is coming from academics to help our kids?
So we've released this data to the schools and the school councils, and asked them to look at these slides, particular things that we feel we have lots of control over in terms of, you know, addressing very specifically. So I'm going to be meeting with the middle school and high school principal so that we can talk about what they're looking at for activities and strategies to specifically address some of those, like the academic stress.
I think we also have to remember though, that it's more parental education also, because you have a lot of parents who are, who really...
They're the type meetings.
Yeah, who, you know, stress on their kids, you know, you have to, you have to do well, so I don't have to pay your cost. So I think part of it, a big part of it is educating the home environment also.
But I think there's also a big piece of it where there's kids that have, you know, five hours of homework. To me that, like, you know, I mean Kara, you know.
Oh, believe me.
Yeah, that, and I'm sure we all have a kid that, that's, to me it's ridiculous. So you expect them to be a well-rounded kid, so you want them to play a sport, be involved in drama, or something else. So half of them don't get home till six o'clock after leaving at seven o'clock in the morning for whatever they're involved in. And then you'd like them to eat dinner, you know, maybe, you know, if they're sitting at another, you know, business meeting, maybe get some sort of physical exercise because that's going to help your brain. And then, okay, now you have to stay up for five hours and do homework.
Yeah, it does seem sometimes, they work so hard in school, and then they turn around and they're home, you know, they go out, they do their sport or their after-school activity, whatever it is, and then they're home and, you know, some of them are hitting the books for seven or eight hours. It's like, why?
Right.
You know? Why, why should they have to do so much work if they're doing it, you know, if they're using their time at school?
Right.
I don't know.
And I know there's not enough hours in a school day, but I think that's something that may, that should be addressed. And I think a lot of times unfortunately, it's also in the higher level AP honors classes that these kids are having three, four hours of homework. And typically, those are the kids that are putting the stress on themselves, that there's no way I'm not going to do this.
Right.
So they're going to stay up for four or five hours and do that, and so...
So are we pulling ourselves away from intelligent, work-smart behavior and just going for...
Hours and hours.
Hours, it, it, I feel like our, like the expectation of so many, it's, in some of these classes, it's, it's just about...
Volume.
Right, instead of depth or intelligence, it's, and it's a very different thing, and it makes no sense to me.
Like one or two math problems that cover the concepts that you're supposed to be learning versus hours.
Twenty-four.
No, five pages.
And are you really going to get it if you didn't get the first two?
Right.
Or four, you know? It just doesn't make any sense. And I think it's a real issue.
So I'd like to try to work out some sort of plan to, what we're doing about that. You know, what, how can we help our kids to reduce the stress? I don't know if it's collaboration with the teachers to figure out, you know, I gave these kids, and I, it's hard because not all the kids, it's not like middle school where, you know, not everyone has a test, let's not, I'll give a test on Thursdays. But also, you know, as a teacher, you have these kids in a class, you know if your homework's going to take about three hours. So really, does any homework for one class need to take three hours? Personally, I don't think so.
Not in high school. Maybe in college, but not in high school, right?
Right, right, like not in high school, no. So I don't know how we address that, if that's, you know...
Well, there's a lot of work that we've done pre-K through eight in terms of, you know, looking at differentiated instruction, looking at assessments, and trying to really have teachers hone in on the very specific aspect of learning that has to take place. Some of those trainings have not hit the high school yet, and they, we need to do more of that now that the eask is over. I'm very hopeful that they'll engage in those PDA events that we've scheduled or have available to send them off to.
I think definitely needs to be addressed. And I know with middle school kids, I'd say, listen, if you took, you know, the teacher would say twenty minutes on each thing, and for a couple of my kids, I'd say, you know what, then you're done. That's it. You stop, you're done, but they're not going to do that in high school.
Right, right.
Well, I have one who was. But, you know, for the most part, they're not going to do that. So you know, you spent an hour and a half, just be done with it, talk to your teacher. And most of them aren't going to do that. I'd like us to sort of keep that in mind of how we're going to help alleviate the stress. I think that's a good goal for us, to make a plan to what we're going to do. I don't know, so how do we do that?
Yeah, how do we do that?
I'm not sure.
So let's, when we look at the school approval plan, you know, because that's something I'm looking for.
Okay.
You know, we will, I'll be looking for that and asking for that, we'll bring that up.
Okay.
Because it's a, it's definitely part of, you know, it's really for the teachers to plan.
Right.
I appreciate the school committee wants to plan, but it's really for the teachers because they've got to really wrestle with...
Oh, no, I just want to know that they have a plan.
Exactly, exactly, that's what I'm saying. It's really going to be embedded in that school approval plan. And it, you know, for a high-performing high school, it's a rest, it's somewhat of an internal professional wrestling match of, am I giving up rigor by not having this expectation of workload?
But rigor?
That's typical.
I know, I know, and that's what they've got to educate themselves about.
And I think that whole community, not just Micho, but has that issue.
I agree, I agree. And that's a parental piece as well. And frankly, it's one, you know, when you get feedback that, oh wait, you know, they're being awfully easy at the high school, that my kids are only having an hour of homework, you know, as a school committee, as a superintendent, I've got to be able to respond and educate them and say, you know, that's right, that's, that's all they need, because they're doing something smarter, they're working smarter in school to be able to work smarter when they get home.
Kathy's writing in a little note. Somebody follow up.
Okay, town meeting overview?
Lancaster was uneventful.
Was it?
Passed the budget, very few questions regarding anything. We were home by eight forty-five. Everybody was very pleased and everything was very gracious after the meeting, thanked for service.
We had a nice plug from the finance committee about thanking the school committee for, you know, working on reducing the budget.
Can I hook the Lancaster? It sounds like a pleasant...
Yeah, there's plenty, there's one down the street from you too, two down. It's a little close to the road, but you know. It's in the road.
It is in the road.
Well, that's Lancaster. I don't think everyone else says the same report.
Stowe, how things? It was okay.
It was a lot.
But not because of the conversation at the school.
No, I was actually quite encouraged when the school conversation came up, because there was the, the, the people that I expected to talk negatively about the budget, but there was a lot of support. There was a lot of support there, and the budget passed without, without any question.
As always, the school budget was pulled from the, to be considered separately from the budget as a whole. And, you know, we did the little slide presentation, and had a few questions, and a little bit of grandstanding.
Thank you.
In the end, it was, the vote was not close, it was, it was...
Which you had, yeah.
Yeah. That's great. We can't say the same in bold. No discussion about any of the budget issues actually, and the school's, the school budget was very well received, but the budget overall was not passed, so.
And thank God we reduced the assessments, because I don't think it would have been as well received. So it was, it was good. I mean, even, even one of our biggest challengers on these school budgets that I really had a problem with.
It's nice, it is, good. Yeah. And as you, as you all know, that we are, we have to get a two-thirds majority, and so we have that, and our budget then is in effect, and so we will vote for the plan that was outlined in the budget, so that's how it works.
Anything else about town meetings to share? No. Well, they're only once a year. For the toys, for sure. Don't have anything in the whole business? Oh, superintendent's evaluation, I'm going to talk about in the personnel report. We're actually going to have a full discussion at a later date. Let me get it there. First is finance subcommittee. We approved the warrants, and we talked a little bit about perhaps doing sort of a brief budget analysis at each of our meetings next fall. You know, to sort of look at different parts of the budget and how it's progressing and everything, so that we can have better understanding. That's great. Anything else for finance? No, no. Okay. Personnel, well, here we go. We have met two times for a couple of hours each, the personnel subcommittee working on the superintendent's evaluation. Thank you everybody for getting your parts done. We had full participation on time, which was awesome. And we are virtually done, and we were hoping to actually be able to discuss it tonight, but we didn't have time to get it to all of you to have a chance to read it before we met tonight, because we just finished it this afternoon. And... The results. You took the results? The results, yes. Compiling them and summarizing them into the report that we were all going to review, which we now will do at the next meeting. But hopefully, if all goes well, you will receive them via, receive the report via email probably tomorrow or the next day. And that way you'll have plenty of time to review it before we reconvene, and then we can talk about it then. It was a much bigger project than anybody had anticipated, just because compiling all the results was, I don't know, I think last year we had more, more help from Alida.
Alida's on vacation, how dare her.
Yeah, right. But like I said, we're virtually done, so we'll be talking about it soon. Policy? Michael? Lorraine?
Um, I, it's been so long since we've met as a committee, I'm trying to remember where we were last. We, our last policy meeting, we did start talking about building use, and we are currently debating which sections of the school should maybe be open for public, public rental versus, versus just closed off. And I think Michael is putting together some recommendations for that. We met with the life-threatening allergy parents again, and are very close to having a policy to put in front of you for a first reading. I think again, we're just wordsmithing that a little bit.
We're still on the protocol, actually.
Yeah, yeah. So, well then hopefully the policy will, will be here sooner rather than later. And I will let Lorraine talk about the, oh, then I will talk about the survey, unless Kara would like to talk about survey.
Come on, go on.
So the, the district climate survey went out and came back, as you all know, there was a sixty-three percent response rate, which is awesome. Got a lot of information. As you can see in your packet, that is the district aggregate. So all of the buildings, including the central office, is, is in that aggregate. There was some really, really encouraging, inspiring stuff to see, you know, for the most part, people have worked for, for the district for several years, they plan on staying for several more years. There is some stuff that you can take building by building that, that we're still kind of parsing, which is why it's not available tonight. There's so much information, which is really awesome. But it's, again, taking it down to the buildings that is, that is taking a while. That will be discussed at our next policy meeting, and hopefully at that policy meeting, we will be able to put together the deck and then present it formally. There was an email that went out to all the district staff thanking them for participating and directing them to the district aggregate.
Awesome. Any response to the thank yous?
I think we, it, we came from the school committee email address, so...
We can't respond.
And right now you can't respond, which one of the things we should probably talk about twenty times. Right, is making it responsive.
Is that, is that standard procedure to when we have, when we finish the survey, do we send out thank yous?
I don't know.
Well, I just, I just...
I would, I don't know.
You get one at the end, like, I know, it's just a, um...
Yeah, no, it's a superintendent thing, I gotta thank you for filling out the survey. Oh.
Oh, at the end of the survey?
Yeah.
Which acknowledged that you finished, didn't you, and you took the check in?
Yeah, that's where it is, yeah.
I think, well, this, this particular survey, um, has garnered a lot of interest. And I know when I go into the schools, I do get asked, "When am I gonna get to see?" So that's why we kind of felt it was necessary to say, "We know, we know, it's coming."
Yeah.
Heaven forgot.
Exactly.
Well, it's only been, huh?
It, it, this effort has like, I don't ever, I mean, this is more than a three-month effort.
But when did it close?
It closed on April fifteenth.
So it hasn't been a month yet.
I know.
Oh, that's good.
And we should give a shout out to Lorraine. This has been a, an...
It's not just me.
An amazing effort. It is not just Lorraine, it is eighty percent Lorraine. Let's acknowledge that right there.
And the percentage response?
Sixty-three. In a typical survey such as this, a ten to twenty percent response rate is considered good. So we far exceeded that, which means people are engaged and they wanna be heard and they have, you know, they're just engaged. That's a good thing.
But we had a, we had a conversation before about when a, when the responses from a survey are actually useful, they have to have a certain number, and I thought it was closer to forty or fifty, no?
I wanted fifty. But like, that's pie in the sky and I'll never commit to a number again. But we exceeded it, so I'll remind everyone, I wanted fifty. Because it's a closed environment and because people are engaged. But it is unusual to see that high of a response rate. Especially because it wasn't tied to an incentive. You didn't have to take it.
Yeah, that's true.
Or, or a punishment. So you didn't have something taken away.
And it was totally different than anything we've been on?
I, I mean, I, I mean, I worked with Sawyer School a few years ago to help retool theirs. And this is really just a climate survey. And I think what's good about it is it gives us a view across the district and different silos that we can dig down into. And it's good stuff, there's good information. And people were forthcoming. They were, you know, I'm not so sure, so you get a lot of like neutrals on some questions, I don't know. And they even said, uh, you know, "I'm gonna give you this shot and see what you guys come back with and if you actually do something with it." And I think if we establish a regular, not every year, but if we establish a regular pattern, you'll see that even higher.
Did, did you get the, given the retestings?
I did. I think Nicole could say the same thing. What do you think?
Yeah, a little.
Kind of like, "Ah, I'm gonna dip my toe in." But that's good, right? If we do something with it.
Well, if we do something with it, yeah.
And we have to. You filmed that, right?
Huh?
You filmed that, right?
I did. Central, central office.
George? Did you do the survey?
I had a little trouble getting it through.
No, that's because you opted out of the tour. You opted out of, that's what it said, that's not Lorraine.
It, you didn't, from what I understand, that you didn't have to opt out then, you opted out a while ago.
At any time previously.
You could've opted out three years ago.
Right.
Are you sorry, look, you...
I don't know, anyway, I eventually got the survey.
Thank you for calling me out on that, how it was you're doing.
Doesn't call you guys, if you get hard work, we gotta get several leads.
The wrong line is, he got it.
He did get it out. And I'm happy to hear that you responded because I can't tell who, we took away the opportunity for us, and this is important. We took away the opportunity for us to identify specific people, though some of the verbatims are directive, so, yeah.
But they're not attached to the...
No. They get a nu, they get assigned a number.
No, it isn't like you're, you're looking at one specific thing. So when you read the bottom and you say, "Oh, the answer, this, this has to be so-and-so," and then they can read up. Like, all those little lines are all clumped together and...
They don't rank which word they are, yeah.
So you really can't.
If you're gonna be too, really, we don't want to be that. Because we told them it was anonymous.
Yeah, I think if there, there's some, um, just that mention specific names, I think, you know, going through and scrubbing some, some names.
You might wanna add that next time, don't write specifics.
Well, you just, no, you can't because you want the feedback. I think, I think, you know, we just give them the aggregated data and so they can see perspective. And the only reason we go into verbatims is if something doesn't make sense or is unclear, and then that helps define, when you see repeat comments over and over, like, "My principal's wonderful, I love my principal," you know? And we saw a lot of that. So it's like, wow.
Well, I read through the whole thing and I thought it was wonderful and amazingly positive. I mean, I haven't seen the comments, but I've seen the aggregates, I thought it was great.
It's gonna be pages. It's like a, it's sixty percent.
Yeah, it's a lot of pages.
It's a lot of pages.
But it didn't take that long for people to get through. No, because they just click, click, click through it, unless they put in...
So it's actually feedback from one person about how much time they spent on it because they put comments in every single section and spent a lot of time on those, so... They felt it was a lot.
So who's that between all the staff?
Someone who did the survey that I was talking to.
How many employees do we have?
Because they spent time writing comments for...
Oh, my heart, wow, jeez. There's a lot of places to put comments.
It's good numbers. Absolutely.
Did the chairman do some?
Yes. Every full and part-time employee of the district and updating.
Moving along, uh, the space study task force?
Oh, we are in such a good place, don't you think?
Absolutely.
We are in such a good place that the interim report has been finalized and, um, everybody voted to approve it. And we would love to get a subset of the folks on the space study task force in front of the school committee at the next regular meeting to have, um, a couple of people report out on the recommendations. So if we could get that on the agenda, yes?
This is still the first one or the second?
This is the second one. But did we even publish the first one?
It was in the pack.
Still have never seen the first one.
We'll bring it up when we do the...
We jump it in.
It was in the packet. Because it was really just an update of what we've done. It really, it wasn't, there were no recommendations or...
This one has some really strong data in it, and I think everybody that participated in it learned something. I mean, it was exhaustive, and we have more, from here, where do we go? And that's the question.
So that isn't what this, the report says?
This, this report gives you an overview of the status of where things are at, what some of the concerns are, um, what scheduling, specifically what does the space constraint do to scheduling of the classes? Um, and some of the concerns that the educators in the building have due to the space constraints. Is there anything else? Anything? Oh, you missed one, oh. That's good, you guys are good. I think you'll all be happy with it, and I'm not the other, so... I'm not too...
That's really a team, I believe.
You know what, honestly, Michael, I think you're so right. This was a, such a rewarding experience, as much as I complained about it, and I did complain about it because it was so exhausting. But this group of people came together and did such a nice job, it was great.
Great.
Uh, superintendent's report?
Sure. Just to highlight things that haven't been already talked about, um, if you haven't heard already, Alana Sierra, who has been an assistant principal here at Forester School, uh, will be leaving, uh, July one to become the principal at Proctor Elementary School in Northborough, Mass. So we certainly congratulate her. Um, I saw some of my colleagues that I trained them well, and then they come over and take them. And Laura Friend is the candidate that I've hired for the, uh, principal of the Burbank Middle School. And, uh, she's been, um, don't lie for our district overall. She's worked in our teaching and learning office, she's worked as an assistant principal, she's worked as a teacher in two different buildings. Uh, and so, um, she's definitely ready and prepared to take on that role. She's been the assistant principal at Mary Rowlandson for the last three, four years, three years.
What happened with the, um, the center school principal meeting?
So we are continuing that process. So we had two, uh, principal candidates visit the school, uh, through a very busy day, uh, busy afternoon and early evening. And then, um, and we're doing a site visit on one of the candidates, um, this thir, this Friday, actually, and going to visit his school.
Is he a principal of that school?
He's a principal of that school.
And why does he want to leave?
Um, primarily, it's because of, um, travel. Um, it's, this would cut his distance to his home about fifty percent. But also because of some of the things that we can offer him in terms of programming and so forth that he would lead, so...
The...
I'm sorry, is somebody taking Laura's place for the mayor ultimatum?
They're interviewing and they have finalists coming tomorrow to do site visits.
Are there any in-house people interviewing?
Uh, not in that, yeah.
Do you have a team to that? Is there, is there hiring a team to that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we are, we're, our goal is to do all hiring teachers and administrative and be done before school ends.
Because, uh, truly, they need to believe that this is a very important position.
The assistant principal?
No, uh, what she's leaving. Fifth grade teacher.
She is assistant.
She, she was a fifth grade teacher.
She was, she's had many roles and she's awesome at every single one.
We love her.
We love her here, too.
So, uh, as you know, I'm on the Foundation Budget Review Commission, and this is a group that's studying, uh, the foundation formula, uh, as part of the overall Chapter Seventy formula. And, uh, we just met on Tuesday, uh, where in crunch time as well, trying to, uh, meet our goal, uh, by charter, uh, to be done by June thirtieth. However, we are gonna ask for, uh, essentially a compromise on that with an interim report, uh, for June thirtieth because, uh, most of our time to date has been collecting data and, uh, having the hearings. And we haven't really had time as a group of people to really discuss the data and what it's telling us. So, uh, we'll be meeting through the summer and into early fall, and we will, um, hopefully finalize by November first with the goal that what we, what we recommend will actually take place for the FY seventeen, uh, development of the formula, uh, for Chapter Seventy. Uh, educator evaluation committee continues to meet, that's our committee locally. Uh, we are working on surveys as well. Uh, we have the student survey, uh, and so we're piloting those in, in about four or five different classrooms during the month of May. And, uh, we'll get that feedback and then we'll go live, um, with as many classrooms. I, I think our goal will be all classrooms, uh, but we haven't worked finalizing that language. Uh, and our primary tool is, is something that the state had recommended. We've adapted, um, to the three tools that the state had provided, uh, as sort of the guidance for us to get started.
Can you get to see that, what was that?
The survey?
The educator evaluation survey?
Yeah, I can.
What kinds of questions are they?
Uh, they're, they're focused on learning and, and what the students' perception is, the role of the teacher has been on their learning. So questions like, uh, one of them is, "My teacher makes me feel comfortable to be able to ask questions." Uh, "My teacher creates a safe learning environment," you know? So they're, they're really focused about what the student's thinking about the overall climate. It's, uh, actually, we're going to do it K through twelve, uh, but there, there are four different surveys, essentially. There'll be a K through two survey, a three-five survey, a six-to-eight, and a nine-to-twelve.
Do you have the high school willing to do work for each teacher?
The, oh, yes, each teacher will have a survey. What we haven't decided exactly is whether or not each teacher has to do all five of their classes. Um, we haven't finalized that yet. I think we want to, it's just a question of whether or not they...
When do you both have this done by?
Uh, will be done by the end of the school year.
To have it in each classroom?
On the pilot, essentially?
The pilot's being done in, uh, we'll finish that in the month of May, and we meet first week of June, and we'll just roll it out, it's gonna be done electronically.
So is that we're doing it at the end of the school year or not?
Uh, because they, they want a full compassion of the year. We'll probably talk about whether or not we wanna continue that, if we wanna do it in, at, you know, like, the fourth of vacation or something like that. But it'll be at the end of the course, so, uh, half-year teachers, at the high school, for example, will do it at the end of their half-year.
Do seniors do an exit survey of any sort?
They have in the past, it's not every year, though, uh, so I can double-check with Dr. Graham, see if they're doing it this year. I think they are, I haven't heard differently, so I'll ask him about that.
How are you gonna have surveys for kindergarten and first grade, are there any picture?
It, it's actually, it's a, uh, we're calling it a service, a survey. Uh, it's actually a facilitated conversation, uh, and there's some guidance from the, um, the Desi in terms of doing that. It's four or fi, uh, five to six questions, uh, and, uh, they'll do it as part of morning meeting, uh, and either through, uh, you know, thumbs up.
So they ask all of them and have them raise their hand?
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, it's the first step, and we'll see how that works overall.
I've seen the kid surveys, Laura Friend, actually, I worked on it with her, and it was awesome.
Yeah.
She did surveys, um, and there was pictures, so it's...
Good for her.
Oh my gosh, I was laughing so hard.
They're adorable.
You know, I'm a business, and to look at it, it made so much sense, and it was so visual, and she had them circling pictures.
Right.
I was great.
Yeah, yeah.
So she's already created it, why don't we...
No, it's not that, it was just a survey with what you want to do for enrichment activities. There was a survey on that.
But it's age appropriate.
Right.
Oh, my god.
So the K is gonna be through morning meeting, and then one and two is gonna be, they're going to do something with pictures and smiling faces.
And are they all anonymous?
They're all anonymous, yeah.
Except for...
Some of them, right. And just lastly, um, in work that we've been trying to do with our association, uh, I, for a number of years, have tried to interest them in doing interest-based bargaining, which is a model of collaborative bargaining, uh, which I've done in prior districts, uh, before. They actually had tried it here before my arrival, and it was not successful, and so they've had, uh, a difficult time kind of getting back on that train. Uh, but this past Monday, Nancy, myself, the leadership of the, um, association, and Monica Visco, our director of human resources, uh, we attended a, a collective bargaining training around interest-based bargaining, and they have expressed an interest to move forward with some more conversation about it, maybe some more in-depth training. Uh, and so, um, I, it's a very positive step, uh, I think, for this group as a whole, meaningful sites.
Only because, um, the bargaining, the training, it's been something I've never wanted to touch. I would've gone to this, only, so I'm wondering, um, how did you decide who was gonna go?
So they asked, they, when they sent out the invitation, they said, "Chair of your school committee, uh, president of your association, superintendent, and HR person."
So did you end up with a, a, uh, presentation, like a packet?
I do have materials and I can show those with you, sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Is it something that, were they just bullets for them to talk on afterwards, or did it actually explain what's going on? Was it interactive?
Yeah, it was interactive.
We actually did like a mock, uh, issue.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. It was good. I, I learned a lot.
Can we do that now?
We could.
Do they do that with MSC or anything?
Um, we could get somebody to come in and do a training with all of you.
And I don't want to, I don't want to give anyone else work.
Nope, no, but I think they would come and do like a fifteen or twenty-minute overview for, because I think it'd be good to have buy-in for all of you uh, before we make that decision, as, as, because, you know, it's still gonna be two parties. I'm sure they're gonna have to go back to their executive board and have the same conversation.
Well, it's informative, too, and it's an area that very few of us have exposure to, so it would be really helpful.
They, they had a, the similar workshops at the, um, the all-day thing that we all had to do.
Yep.
Um, and at the, at the Cape, that two- or three-day workshop thing, they had this same thing there. It was an option. So it, it'll become available again, I'm sure, there too.
But it, but as a group, it would be, I think it's such a big part of our roles, it might be helpful for someone to come.
Absolutely, and I, I think it, it, it would be very helpful. There, there is a book called Getting to Yes, which at some point I will get everybody to have, so you'll have a copy of that.
It's not really big, is it?
It's not. Very tiny, yeah. So that's our, that's my update.
Actually, I have a question. On number four, you said that open letter came up, and I was just wondering...
No, it actually did come up, I actually asked it.
Okay.
They very, very specifically said it will not be considered, uh, so...
Who said, who said that?
Well, Roger Hatch, who's the, uh, finance, um, sort of manager of, um, all the data analysis... Well, Roger Hatch, who's the finance sort of manager of all the data analysis for developing Chapter Seventy, developing the Chapter Seventy formula.
And who is he?
He's from DESI, Department of Elementary and Secretary of Education, and he's a member of the commission as well.
And he told you why he didn't want to touch it?
Well, he said that they, they do not see OPEB as an expense. They see it as a, essentially, a stabilization fund for future expenses. So the chapter, the foundation formula is designed to get, to capture what the actual costs are in prior years, or prior year, that, that this district needed to do a study on a per pupil basis.
Is it more state mandated? Would that change everything?
So that's a great question. I mean, I probed it a little bit afterwards with him. I, you know, he agreed that there probably needs to be more conversation about it, but at least at, at that moment in time, it kind of died on the, on the line. Because I, I do agree, I believe that districts like ours, where it's such a huge expense in the fiscal year, it's part of our pure people expenditure. I mean, it, it will come back and be calculated as part of that, and it should count for something. We're, we're going to raise an appropriate money as part of the assessment. The towns are going to raise an appropriate money to pay for the assessment. That's going to include that payment. And so, to me, it's an expense.
Okay, so what happened to special education?
So nothing's finally yet, but essentially what the, what will happen is they will reexamine what the actual costs are in a given year, raise the bar of what those costs are in the formula.
As an aggregate or as an individual district?
So it always comes back to the individual district when they do the calculation. So, you know, that will be a factor. But they're, they're looking at, they're looking at this right now in the aggregate, because we were looking at averages across the board.
So how much did we lose in spend?
We won't.
Through the Chapter Seventy? We're not losing anything next year?
We, we don't lose anything in Chapter Seventy, through the Chapter Seventy for special education.
So the numbers didn't go down at all?
Right. This isn't ready for implementation, so this, we don't know when the actual changes we recommend will be implemented. We hope for FY seventeen.
Okay. So, all right, so does our busing come into this because we're district?
Regional transportation is not part of the foundation budget. It's a separate account. Nor does transportation.
What happens to the thousand dollars that we said we were not going to put towards our lawyers? Did that go away? Did that?
So that's, we haven't paid a dime. And there, our association is still in negotiation with the executive branch.
So this doesn't give money?
Without going to court. So we're still having some conversations.
So we only pay if it goes to court?
Yeah.
Can you say, "Our association, our associations"?
Massachusetts Association of Regional School Districts.
So how do they feel about that?
How, how it's progressing? I think that they, they feel good that there's very possibly going to be a resolution that will protect money for next year. I don't think we're going to see anything from this year. So I think the...
We didn't get anything for this year?
What's that?
We didn't get anything this year? Or it just went down?
It just went down. It went back to the FY thirteen, fourteen number.
And so they're looking at it's going to increase a little bit, maybe?
For next year, yeah.
Substantially?
Could be. Could be. The House budget is a good increase, and hopefully the Senate will agree with that. It's definitely more than what the governor proposed.
Any other questions? I don't have any citizens to hear from.
She left.
We went to Dale and Lo. We did go to Dale and Lo, and we met your friend, your friend. And we met, okay, okay. And that was good. And we missed the lunch, pretty much.
That's the best part.
Those kids do a great job.
We had salad, but it was still good.
The chicken salad is good.
The chicken salad was good. But it was great. That's, I mean, that's probably something to share, too, is that, you know, the opening meeting, where everyone is there and they talk about what the issues are. Now I can't remember. Do you remember what the big concerns were at the?
Well, Holyoke was the talk of the committee. Because it's in state receivership now, and so that was, everyone was very offended. And, and justifiably so, I believe.
Why?
Um, you know, that's...
Michael said it was better, I guess. You said they have, well, was it you or someone else that they had struggles?
Yeah, it's been radically underperforming. And by the formula for deciding a level-five school, the commissioner and I decided to take action. He could go either way.
So he's done, yeah.
He, he just did. They took it over. The state took it over.
So is this similar to what happened in, was it Rhode Island?
Lawrence.
Similar. Because in Rhode Island, they get rid of like eighty percent of the teachers, psh, we're out and back.
Oh, as a result?
Yeah, I don't think any action has happened, yeah, but...
So why would they be so upset about the state taking that over? Wouldn't that, doesn't that give them a feeling?
It loses local control.
Yeah, but I would think that they would just, they would, they'd have more money available to do whatever it needs them to do.
I, I don't know that it means more money necessarily in terms of operations. It certainly would mean more opportunities for professional development and trainings and, and some of those things, but...
Is it all of the school or just one?
All of them.
The whole district.
The whole district.
Really?
So the state will appoint the central, the receiver or the superintendent. The receiver has both the role of the superintendent and the school committee.
So there is a school committee?
There still remains a school committee, but they have no, they're only advisory. They have no power.
So does a private entity take this over, or is it a state person?
They, they can make those decisions after they, you know, get going, but that's not, that's not what this is. This is the state.
And so was that something immediate, like the next day, something's there?
Immediately, yes.
They waited until the end of the year?
I don't know what the dynamics of that was. I mean, there were a lot of hearings and everything, so things, they gave the public input.
How long was that going on?
All, pretty much all year.
Does anybody have any correspondence we have to talk about? I just had a couple people call about just wanting to make sure we're not teaching to the test and spend too much prepping for MCAS. I'm just concerned. What's popular, MCAS?
MCAS. It's supposed to be today, right?
Yeah.
I don't mean MCAS, absolutely.
And I got another letter just about building your schedule that they weren't in for us when it comes up to the...
When they stop, why is that?
When do we start PAR?
That has not been decided yet. The Board of Education is having hearings right now, as a matter of fact.
So that is not something, because last I heard, or thought I heard, we were gearing up for PAR.
I think that's the general consensus, is that we're gearing up for PAR. It's what's being piloted. But the Board of Education is under new leadership, and we have a new governor and new...
We are gearing up? Or Massachusetts is gearing up?
The state, which will mean we will.
Some people in Massachusetts are starting.
We're not doing anything. We're just doing MCAS.
So how long do you think, how much longer do you think we'll be doing MCAS?
Well, I'm guessing one year.
And I would assume that it's really just, in many respects, will just be the same thing under a different name in terms of concerns about teaching to the test and blah, 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 blah. All those kinds of things. The concerns won't go away just because it's not...
No, because those concerns are about, you know, the necessity for high school tests, the, the value of the amount of assessment that takes place, or the instructional time.
The value of the time that's spent versus...
The money that goes into costing these tests.
But then locally, just within us, that's, all the tests are being, they're on the computer. The kids do them on the computers, and they're going back to the state, right?
The results?
Yeah.
Of course.
So we're not geared for one-to-one PAR testing?
We're actually in very good shape for PAR testing, because you're, you're not testing the same grade every day. So we're a little shy at the high school, but all of our, three through five, three through eight, we're all set. Yeah, we're all, we're in good shape.
Any other correspondence? Consent agenda. There are no objections. Then the warrants from April 24, 2015, the warrants from May 8, 2015, and the minutes from April 8, 2015. There are no objections. And we're all approved. Great, thank you. So Kara? Is this your last meeting?
Thank you.
For your service and, and our, it's a party gift for you.
You can take your name, can I get that?
Yeah.
Seriously, thank you very much for the energy and effort you've put into helping us all out for three years. Appreciate it. Items for next agenda, anything that hasn't, I know, Space Study Task Force wants to do a presentation. We've got that down.
And the climate survey results.
And the climate survey results.
And are you going to read the, the life-threatening algae policy at the next meeting? That's where we had one guest here. She thought it was being read tonight.
I don't think it will be. I don't think, the policy will be. We'll do the policy. Yeah, we can do the policy.
She's in the meeting. I don't know why she talked about it. Yeah, she was part of the meeting.
No, I didn't know she was part of it.
No, but I mean, she was part of it, so she knew it wasn't going to be read.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I don't know.
The policy, we can do the policy.
They put a lot of work in.
They did, they did. They've done some great work, great work.
And then the superintendent's evaluation is also going to be added to the report.
Oh, my God.
Electric?
They're as much busy as they are.
It won't be as helpful, yeah.
Well, maybe we won't have the superintendent's evaluation.
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting, because he won't be here, so. That'd be a good idea. Okay. We have to do this executive session?
Yes, because while we have Kara here, this is to vote on the executive session minutes. Should be very quick.
It should take us a minute.
Yeah.
Literally. Oh, we didn't know. Nobody knew, so. Anything else to discuss?
So don't we have to make a motion to adjourn to going to...
You're on it? Are we ready?
Look at you, so much happier than when you first walked in.
Yeah.
See what, see what we do for you?
And I forgot, can I make a little announcement? I got, I got an award at work yesterday because they decided to start giving quarterly awards, and the first category is citizenship for people who go above and beyond out in the community. And someone nominated me for being a school committee candidate.
Did you get money? Did you get money or a statue?
I got a fifty-dollar Amazon card.
Where do you work at here?
The way you shouldn't say. Okay. I move that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of reviewing and approving minutes of previous executive sessions for release to public. And in addition to the school committee, the executive session will include Superintendent Wood, Assistant Superintendent King, Administrative Assistant Masterson. And at the conclusion of our executive session, we will adjourn back to regular session for the sole purpose of adjourning the meeting, and no further business will be discussed at that time.
And we have to roll, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, come on, we do.
Julie?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
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 Yes.